Shalom, I'm Saints. I want to welcome you to another Shabbat Study Session here with the Multitude Christ Ministry, where we seek to teach all nations of people how to find true salvation according to the Holy Scriptures, history, and the lost books. Well, we greet you on this Most High Shabbat Day. And today's Bible study lesson is entitled, "Israel's Continuous Amnesia." Israel's Continuous Amnesia. Well, my name is Ra'ah Ben El-Eyon, and I'm going to be your Bible study teacher today. So we thank you for joining us wherever you are throughout the diaspora. And so, we are going to get into this Bible study lesson today after the Scripture reading, coming from 2 Maccabees, Chapter 1. And we have a song selection from our music ministry. Then we'll get right to the Bible study lesson. Come, Halal Aleh, let's stand, let's face toward the east, face towards Jerusalem, or Shalom, or Salem, as we've learned in the prior lessons. Scripture reading this morning comes from 2 Maccabees, Chapter 1, verse 24 to 29. And it reads, "And the prayer was after this manner, O El, O El Elyon, Creator of all things, who art fearful and strong and righteous and merciful and the only and gracious King, the only giver of all things, the only just and almighty and everlasting, thou that deliverest Israel from all trouble and dost choose the fathers and sanctify them; receive the sacrifice for thy whole people, Israel, and preserve thine own portion and sanctify it; gather those together that are scattered from us; deliver them that serve among the heathen; look upon them that are despised and abhorred; and let the heathen know that thou art our El-Eyon; punish them that oppress us and with pride do us wrong; plant thy people again in thy holy place, as Moses has spoken." Scripture reading came from 2 Maccabees, Chapter 1, verse 24 to 29. May the Most High El bless this reading and this Bible study lesson today. As we move forward, sisters and brothers, we will have the song selection, "Living in the Kingdom," from the MOC Ministry. Come, Halal Aleh.
Do you know what you're striving for?
Do you know what you're striving for?
To be with El forevermore.
To be with El forevermore.
We're praying that he rest his sin.
Praying that he rest his sin.
But only if we're free from sin, living in the kingdom. Ooh, in the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Ay, in the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Ooh, in the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Hey, in the kingdom. Are you gonna be royalty?
Are you gonna be royalty?
If you're not before the King.
If you're not before the King.
We're praying that he writes our name.
We're praying that he writes our name.
In the books, oh, he'll be changed. Living in the kingdom. Ooh, in the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Hey, in the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Ooh, in the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Hey, in the kingdom. I wanna walk on streets of gold.
I wanna walk on streets of gold.
To be with El a spiritual soul.
To be with El a spiritual soul.
We're praying that he sees our world.
We're praying that he sees our world.
So we can reign upon the earth. Living in the kingdom. In the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Ooh, in the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Ay, in the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. Ooh, in the kingdom. In the kingdom. In the kingdom. In the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. In the kingdom. In the kingdom.
Living.
Woo. Living, 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 living.
In the kingdom.
I'm freestyling, y'all, let's get it.
In the kingdom.
Do you wanna be living?
In the kingdom.
Said I gotta be living.
Living in the kingdom.
Do you wanna be living?
In the kingdom. In the kingdom.
Do you, do you, do you?
In the kingdom.
Do you, do you, do you?
Living in the kingdom.
Do you wanna be living?
In the kingdom.
In the kingdom. In the kingdom. In the kingdom. Living in the kingdom. All praises.
Halal Aleh.
Shalom, I'm Saints. Welcome again to another Shabbat Study Session with the Multitude Christ Ministry. I am Ra'ah Ben El-Eyon. I'll be your teacher today. The topic of this Bible study, or Shabbat study, is Israel's Continuous Amnesia. If you know anything about amnesia, it is the state in which one forgets who he is, what day it is, where they are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Well, we want to look at the cause of Israel's amnesia continuously even today. And we want to kind of recap on some topics that we've gone back and covered over the previous years in Shabbats, if that's alright with you, come.
Alright, come.
So we want to look at the apostasy of Israel, which causes its continuous amnesia. So we want to get into this Shabbat study lesson today. And we want to start with a few scriptures here. We want to start this lesson today in Daniel, Chapter 9. Daniel, Chapter 9, verse 11. Let's go to the book of Daniel, Chapter 9, verse 11. Daniel 9 and 11. And it reads, "Yeah, all Israel have transgressed thy law, even by departing, that they might not obey thy voice." So listen, when you don't keep his law statutes and commandments, you don't obey his voice and what he wants for you. So if you hear anybody saying, "I do the will of the Most High, I listen to him, I talk to him, he came to me in a dream." Anybody that says any kind of conversation like that, and they don't keep his law statutes and commandments, and you can see they don't wear fringes, they don't keep a Shabbat, they don't know what a new moon is, et cetera, et cetera. They have not followed his voice, but they have followed their own voice. And it continues and says, "Therefore the curse is poured upon us." Who is the "us"? Context, Israel, uh, key. Israel is, no, Jo, JoJo. Israel is the ones that the curse will be poured upon because they did not follow his law statute and commandments, meaning they didn't continuously hear his voice. Come, the curse will be poured upon us. And the oath that is written in the law of Moses, the servant of El, because we have sinned against him. How do you sin against the Most High? By not hearing and following his voice. How do you know that you're hearing and following his voice? By keeping his law statutes and commandments. So what do you have to continuously do? You have to know the difference between if you're hearing your own voice or some other subconscious voice, and it contradicts what you know El said. And how do you know what the Most High says? Well, you got to read his scriptures, and you got to pray and meditate so that his word abides with you continuously. Come, does that make sense to everybody? Let's go to Deuteronomy, Chapter 27. So we know that we have to hear his voice. And if we hear his voice and follow his law statute and commandments, then we don't have to worry about no curse. Everybody wants to have an explanation of what a curse is, but they're not using the definition that's in the scripture. They're not even using who the curse is for. He didn't say the whole world would be cursed. He said the ones he gave his law statute and commandments to will be cursed. Then you got to look at the people upon the earth and see who those curses fit. It don't fit everybody in the world because there's truly someone else out here making up their own reality. And in their reality, which millions in the world follow, they're on top. They're on top. So then you got to look at the people that could be under the curse and say, "Why are we staying upon the curse?" Ahah, it's because we are, we are full of chronic or continuous amnesia. We're, we're not remembering what was done and who did it, right? So if you can't remember what was done to you, then you can never come out of the state that you're in, right? Let's go to Deuteronomy, Chapter 27. We're going to read one verse, and that's verse 15. Deuteronomy, Chapter 27, verse 15. It says, "Cursed be the man that maketh any graven image, I mean, graven or molten image, and abomination unto El-Eyon, the work of the hands of the craftsmen, and put it in a secret place; and all the people shall say, Halal Aleh." Now, listen. How do you know you're living up under a curse? Well, I can say for myself, I knew and figured out I was under the curse when first I read what a curse was. Then I read who would be under the curse and what you would have to do to be under the curse. And then here is one of the eye-opening factors that shows that people are under the curse. It also comes from Exodus, right? It also comes from reading Exodus, Chapter 20, 1 through 3. But also, you can read right here, and it says, "Anyone who is worshiping secretly or openly, right, a graven image." See, you got to watch who you send your kids over to their house, right? You got everybody that say, "I worship God and I have a God." You got to say, "Who's your God?" You understand what I'm saying? Be God, be Creator, what's his name? What does he look like? How do you worship him? It has to be some continuous questions. Let, lest you go into a house and you eat a meal that was sacrificed to an idol god. Lest you be surrounded by molten images that you can't see with your naked eye, or you don't even have the knowledge of what art is, right? They're just saying it's art pieces. But really, these art pieces are terrafim and serafim or, or molten engraving images to another god. Hey, this thing is an abomination to El. So, now that we know, uh, what things would cause you to be a curse, like what laws you would break, and what is one of the main ones, this is what we want to pinpoint, and this is what we want to talk about today. We want to talk about what? What's the next image? We want to talk about the graven image that millions of, of people on this earth are under. This graven image. This graven image that many of us have tattooed on our body. This graven image that many of us have on, on the fronts of our Bibles. Many of us have, uh, in our houses, over our mantles, in the for years of our home, right? Many of us walk into a church that has it on the top of its steeple, right? Soon as you walk in, it's on every wall. It's, it's in the windowpanes, right? It's on the front rostrum of the pastor. It's, it's on the pictures behind it. It's everywhere, a graven image given to us, right? And then, a Christian or our relatives would have to be so hyper-spiritual and not understand that they're under the curse. They raised us under a curse, not knowing the voice of the Most High. They don't hear a voice of the Most High. Our parents didn't make us Christians by hearing the voice of the Most High. They made us follow Jesus Christ by sending us to Vacation Bible School, by sending us to Bible camp, by keeping us in BTU and having us in vacation. All these things, they just pumped and programmed the worship of an idol god into us. Yes, I'm saying it for, here, listen. In the first 15 minutes, Jesus Christ and the Christian doctrine, I don't care if you call him Yehoshua, Yeshua, Yeshiah, Shiah, Yahweh Shai, all of it is an abomination to the Most High. Because you can't take what it is and what it means, and you could take away all these idols and say, "We don't worship the cross no more. We don't keep Christmas no more. We don't follow Easter no more." But you kept the name of the person who never exists. All you did was got rid of the seen observance and worship. But secretly and doctrinally, you still worship Jesus Christ. The graven image. So what is a graven image? Graven image, in the Strong's Concordance, Hebrews 6, 4, 5, 9, a graven image is a carved image. So what, what is this? What are these? These are carved images out of wood. What did he say? His people will be worshiping wood and stone, right? And then, the scripture also says, "molten." So let's go back and look at that. Molten, Hebrews 54, I mean, excuse me, 45, 41. Fusion, fusion of metal. Metal works. In most cities, who you see doing the metal work? What are they called? Blacksmith. Blacksmith, right? Now, let's look at an example of molten image. Let's see, how do you mold? Oh, that's what your jeweler does. That's what Jacob the Jeweler and all of these, uh, people that create all of these necklaces and jewelry that your famous rappers and movie stars wearing, right? All their Jesus pieces, all their crosses are molten images of their god, right? So now, you, you might see a rapper with a cross. You might see a rapper with a cross and an ank. You might see a rapper with a cross and an ank and a Jesus piece, right? You might see G, uh, Two Chainz, or who else be wearing a whole bunch of necklaces, right? You, you might see what the Sanders kids, right? The answer, you, you see all of them wearing all of these molten images, but you're not knowing what the images are on them. All you see is, oh, they're wealthy, they got a lot of jewelry on, right? But when you look at the image that is molten or carved, now you can see people's doctrine. It ain't, it ain't only molten and carved images, now they got them tatted on them. Now you got to look at people's tattoos. Now you got to look at what women have on their wrists. What kind of symbol do they have on their back of their ear? They got, they're marking themselves like they're a part of a production plant, right? They're, they're telling you their affiliation and who they roll with. Don't, don't, don't get it twisted. The devil and his children are telling you who they are and what they are, and it's right in plain sight, right? These people have rejected the voice of the Most High. These are the people you're going to see arguing and debating on panels, right? But they know for a fact that they have no love for the Most High law statute and commandments, nor his people, right? So they will represent Jesus, Buddha, Allah, Krishna. You'll see them with all kind of, watch the people with the red ribbon beads, right? All of that Kabbalah. You got to watch who you're around and who you dealing with. There is one Creator. And he ain't got all of these different religions, and everybody's saying they can worship all of these religions and it lead to one God. Blasphemy. Right? So now we know who the people he was talking to. How do you get cursed? We're going to pinpoint who in the world got us wearing all of these different graven and molten images. Why are they in our house? Why are they in Mardeles and Barnes and Noble and Walmart? And everywhere there's a jewelry store. You, you ever notice? You could go up to an Indian jeweler, a Chinese jeweler, a Jewish jeweler, an Italian jeweler, and they all still be making molten images representing all these different religions. Why? Because we're the only idiots caught up in the religious shuffle. We're the only ones playing the game of religion. Everyone else, all the other enemies of Israel are just capitalizing and moving themselves up in wealth and prosperity to the detriment of us who have stopped listening to the voice of the Creator. Come, now let's go to Deuteronomy 28, 15, right? So that's one of the main curses. You got to look at the graven images. You got to look at the stickers on people's cars. You got to look at what, you know, T-shirts are big, hoodies are big. What, what people got on their hoodies and T-shirt? What, what god and what religion they representing, right? Who are they an apologist for? Who are they arguing the case for? How, how is that guy that they're arguing for benefited the whole world, right? You got a whole tribe of the same people representing all these different religions, not yet unified, talking about let's unify. Let's go to Deuteronomy, Chapter 28, and watch, right? So we know that if we don't hear the voice of the Most High and follow his commandments, we're going to fall up under the curses. We seeing the images are the thing that lets you know who people are rocking with, right? Deuteronomy 28, verse 15 reads, "But it shall come to pass, if thou wilt not hearken unto the voice of El-Eyon, to observe, to do all his commandments and statues, which I command thee this day; and all these curses shall come upon thee and overtake thee." Listen. Why are people under a curse? People are only under a curse because they don't hear his voice and obey his voice. The devil hears and understands the assignment. His job is to reject and get you to reject the assignment. You're making the decision. All he's doing is playing little mental games and jousting, and you know what I'm saying? Putting the lust before your eyes. And he got you in an alternative reality where you're not even focused on the voice of the Most High. It mostly comes down to selfishness. What we want is the reason why, is the number one reason why we can't hear the voice of the Most High. Right? Now, look at this. The reason why we have amnesia is because of the apostasy of Israel. Let's look at the definition of apostasy. This is my main reason that I'm going to, we're going to explore today in looking at who is the main leader in the confusion that keeps the continuous amnesia of people? Why we keep falling for it? And because we fall for it, we have voluntarily apostatized ourselves. What is apostasy? Apostasy is the formal disaffiliation. Listen, the Creator chose a people, created a covenant between the people for them to be blessed and to rule for eternity. How did we get on the bottom? Apostasy. It's the formal, listen. We're going to churches formally apostatizing ourselves. We are continuously causing ourselves amnesia by the same foolery generation after generation after generation. All they did was set the plan in place using Willie Lynch and all these other kind of psychological things. But we, they've gone on, they're on the beach, they're in the Hamptons, they're on, hey, they living their best life. Our people, our leaders are continuously keeping us asleep. How can the dry bones awake when our leaders keep coming in, putting us asleep? Put on a nice soul, R. Kelly jazz song, get up there and start talking all articulate. It'd be a new person come on social media and everybody's following them. They'll throw out a new artist, they'll put out a new movie, they have everybody emulating, TikToking, just sunk in place. Apostasy is the formal disaffiliation from, listen, abandonment of, or renunciation of a religion by a person. When you don't hear the Most High's voice, you have apostatized yourself. You have formally disaffiliated, disaffiliated yourself. You have formally abandoned his law statutes and commandments. You have renounced yourself as a child of the Most High. It can also be defined within the broader context, context of embracing. Now, listen, here's what we about to get into, right? Because one of the main ways that you could see someone has stopped listening to the voice of the Most High, and that they are continually living through amnesia, right? They have embraced an opinion that is contrary to the ones' previous religious beliefs. Okay, let me read that again. "It can also be defined within the broader text of embracing an opinion that is contrary to one's previous religious beliefs." Now, what was the previous beliefs of Israel? It was the law statute and commandments of the Most High. What are the current beliefs of Israel scattered through the diaspora? Christianity, Islam, Judaism, Bahiism, every other ism. What's the main, what's the main doctrine of all those Abrahamic faiths that man has made up? Jesus, Isa, whoever, David, uh, uh, the, what the, what the Judaism wait for? Messiah, Dawid, someone from the lineage of David. All of these doctrines. Messiah, Dawid, someone from the lineage of David, all of these doctrines. That everyone's waiting on an Antichrist and a Messiah. All over the world, wherever Israel has been taken, there is a main doctrine that has proselyzed and converted them all over the planet. We've covered it ad nauseam. Look that word up. Ra'a, the multitude of Christ, ad nauseam. To get to this point where we can say, Jesus, put it down. Christianity and all its doctrine, put it down. New Testament and New Testament doctrine, put it down. Salvation now, grace and faith, Christ alone, put it down now. Baptizing the Father, Son and the Holy Ghost, put it down. It's a new thing upon the earth brought to us by man. If you not just watching me for the ah factor or let me see where he slips up so I can try to send an email and correct him factor. If you're really trying to look for true liberation and true freedom and a true understanding, then you would have been watching, I can look at our lessons and I can see, I don't care if it's two people, I can see two people and my average watch time is two hours, right? We don't make a lesson barely under two hours. But that ain't what I see. A month, two ago, we had what, 1,200 something views? What does that matter when the average watch time is six minutes? That means someone is sending clips and someone is saying, go to Minute So-and-so and go to this and go watch the intro or watch the ending. No one's watching to get the whole understanding all the way through. It don't matter if you don't watch it live, even when you watch it later, it should be proof that the two people who follow the MOC has watched the whole thing. Just for me to get questions from people who say they watch us and there's no proof that you've watched the whole video. I shouldn't have to answer questions that we have taught ad nauseam, right? So that's why I've decided we gotta start going back and pulling back and doing some recap. Because Israel is continuously putting themselves in an amnesia state of forgetfulness. As if it wasn't taught ad nauseam if you watched and followed this ministry. Cause it's my goal not to have people apostatize themselves, disaffiliate, abandon, renunciate what our forefathers stood for and what the voice of El has spoken. Does that make sense? That's what we about here, right? So let's go look at some of this doctrine that has kept our people uh, uh, in an apostasy. I need to wake the people up from amnesia, cause we keep forgetting. Y'all hear a lesson like I have and oh, man, we got, they done gone off, stop following them. No, wake up. You are almost in a coma in your day-to-day life. You're keeping yourself under a state of amnesia. And it's my job and my goal to help wake you up. Look, here go a topic right here that can't, you can't stop talking about. All you gotta do is go on the streets and everybody's talking about Jesus like he's God. They're saying God and God and I believe in God and I follow God and God, God. And then they say Jesus. Wait, 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 wait. That's because their teachers have not taught them to hear the voice of El. There's no need for Jesus. There's no need for the New Testament. You don't need the New Testament at all because the scriptures are enough. But the enemies of Israel now feel included in the promises of Israel that El gave his chosen people. That's the battle. Now you are talking to a bunch of people who have no affiliation with Israel, the land of Israel, the curses, the promises that now they, Jesus has adopted them into what? A fake covenant. Jesus ain't El. El said, there's no need for any other God besides me. There is no other God besides me. But you come in with a whole new doctrine, you start dividing it up into Judaism, Islam and everybody got some form of Jesus, right? Now, all the other nations have their version of the story that was made up by who? The Latin, same people, man. The same people we've been talking about ad nauseam. Now, we need to recap. Let's go back to, Jesus is God. Here we go. Graven and molten. You take this guy to China. Chinese do not, they know they don't look like the Mediterranean Romans and Greeks, the European. But because the Chinese wanna be European, because the Japanese idolize Europeans, because the African wants to bleach his skin and be like the European, because the Ethiopian wants to be like the European, because the Mexican and the South Americans want to look like, have straight hair and be like the European, because the European through his scientific racism has put himself at the top. No one wants to believe in the, the uh, the religious spirituality of the forefathers of their people. Everyone buys into the same idolatry all over the world. That's why you have Christians all over the world. But subconsciously, they really want to be the European. They really want the life of the European that they presented through scientific racism. So now you, you teach, don't read the Old Testament. That's the Old Covenant, New Testament, New Covenant. Now, Jesus could be for everyone. Uh, duh, amnesia. You forgot that there is no other uh, Elohim. There's no other Allah besides El Eleon. The New Testament says God is a spirit. So who is that? Is Jesus a spirit or is Jesus a man? It's confusion. The answers aren't to be answered, cause people already bought into the scientific racism of the, of the doctrine. They know Jesus ain't God, but the, the whole religion is what they want. They want the, they want the promises to Israel for themselves. So everything else that's confusion, they, 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 they say that's a little thing. I say it's a big thing because Christians are saying Jesus is God. Jesus is three and one and one and three. If you know the real tenets of Christianity taught by Catholicism, you can't get away from this right here. Let's go to Philippians chapter 2, verse 6. This is the foundation of a Christian doctrine. You have to believe that Jesus is God in flesh, which means God is not a spirit. Spirits can't be killed. Jesus was killed. Make it make sense. Philippians 2, verse 6. "Who, being in the form of God..." Jesus is in the form of God? Then they say, yeah, we are gods. Man, no, the scriptures say sons of gods, right? He, he really calls us sons of man, right? After the garden, we would have known and had the knowledge of gods. Therefore, we had to be kicked out the garden before we had eternal life, right? Totally different beings. But now, this is the foundation of Christianity. Watch verse 5. "Let this mind be in you, which is also in Christ Jesus, who, being in the form of God, thought it not robbery to be equal with God." Wait a minute. We know for a fact that all through scripture, Torah and the prophets, there is none equal to El. Watch this, go to St. John, chapter 5. St. John, chapter 5. But this is the amnesia. But really, there is no one really teaching this. There's no one really teaching this at all. John, chapter 5, verse 17 through 19, right? "But Jesus answered them, 'My Father worketh hitherto, and I work.' Therefore, the Jews sought to more, to kill him..." Because look at this. "He not only had broken the Shabbat, but said also that El was his father, making himself equal with God." That's why they wanted to kill him. Not only he was saying he king and he, he had no kingdom, but they wanted to kill him, cause he walk around saying he equal with God. He the son of God, right? "Then answered Jesus, said unto them, 'Verily, verily, I say unto you, the Son can do nothing of himself.'" Wait a minute. If he a God, why can't he do nothing by himself? And if he is the Father, who is supposed to be helping him? This don't make no sense. If he God in flesh as the Son, why is he saying, I can do nothing by myself? Who does God need help from? God don't need no help. But here, today, people talk about Jesus like he's the everything and he does everything and he's done everything for me. I got my own relationship, you can't tell me nothing about my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, blah, 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 ad nauseam. "Verily, verily, I say unto you, the Son can do nothing of himself, but what he seeeth the Father do, for what things soever he do it, these, these doeth the Son likewise." So monkey see, monkey do. So they, Christians tell you don't read the Old Testament, but Jesus say, I can't do nothing that Jesus ain't already done. Cause I'm watching him. What he do, I can do. So if God talked to the children of Israel, why ain't Jesus talked to nobody in 2,000 years? If El walked with the children of Israel in the wilderness, why ain't Jesus walked with nobody now? Everybody talking about they had a dream, everybody talking about he told me, everybody talking about... No, they not saying that. You got quackpots walking around saying they are the Messiah, they are Jesus. That's what they're saying. I am Jesus. You got the Pope, the Catholic, we're the vicars of Christ. We don't need Jesus. We, now they saying likewise, Jesus could likewise do of the Father, likewise, we could do what Jesus do. Come on, people. Look at this other, look at this other graven image. Now, the same people that got you, got you believing in Jesus. Now, listen, Jesus can't be divine while his mama being divine. And now we got women all through the black church saying, I'm blessed and highly favored. You ain't married, be quiet. Mary never existed, stop being crazy. It's insanity. She never existed, her son never existed. You ain't seen no tombs? You ain't seen no tombs of Jesus, Mary, none of them. Nobody in this New Testament, you ain't found one tomb. But they found King Tut tomb who lived 3,000 years before these people. Excuse my timeline, but you get the point. They finding pharaohs, they over here in America digging up pharaoh's bones. They're in these mounds excavating, finding Israelite bones, Egyptian bones in America. But you don't know, cause all you worried about is Jesus and his graven image of his mother buying candles, buying rosary beads. Doing gang signs in the Catholic Church. Father, Son and Holy Ghost. Listen, you don't need Father, Son and Holy Ghost, cause Jesus say he can do everything the Father can do. Which doctrine is it, Christian? One and three, three and one, it's all a lie. It's all a lie. All of South Central America. All Hispanic communities in, in Americas and throughout the world. You walk in they, they house, they worship Mary more than Jesus. They don't hear the voice of the Most High. You gotta still explain Sabado to them. Jesus Christo Blanco, no Jesus Christo Blanco. Like, we used to argue with them, man, Jesus Cristo Negro, oh! Jesus Cristo Brown like you, nah, 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 nah. Cause they wanna look like Caesar Bozio. It's colorism in every community throughout the world. They pushing. Let's get it, look at this. Let go to Luke chapter 1. What they say on social media? Look, 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 look at here, look, look, look at this, look at this, look at this. Luke chapter 1. Luke chapter 1, verse 28. Look at this. "And the angel came in unto her and said, 'Hail, thou art highly favored; the Lord is with thee; blessed art thou among women.'" You know what the Catholic Church said? We gotta worship this woman. She is the mother of Jesus, even though we know, even in that New Testament, she had other children. Oh, no, they made her a divine virgin. They made her the virgin of virgins, even though she had other children. What? She more highly favored than Sarah? What? You would believe that there is a woman more favored than Sarah? Who made up this doctrine? Who got you worshiping graven images? Why do you, Mr. Baptist, Mr. Kojic, Mr. AME? Why do the black churches got all this idolatry in they church? Passers don't care? It's a money grab, pay your tithes, be quiet. Don't let the brothers in. We don't wanna talk to nobody that teach common sense. Look at this, Mary, look, the Roman Catholic Church, which is where all your Christian denominations come through, through Protestant, Martin Luther, all of them. Look, you a Roman. You, you Israelites, you Romans, you believers in Jesus? Christianity, the whole doctrine, salvation? You Roman. Teaches that Mary is the mediatrix of all graces. The body of doctrine about Mary is called Mariology or Mariolatri. Mariology or Mariolatri. Mariolatri is an appropriate, appropriate term used since the Reformation to mean the worship of Mary. Millions of our Hispanic Latino, Afro-Latino, however you wanna call them. The Spanish came in and did a great job of causing amnesia. The Arawak, they did not worship Mary before the Spanish came. Who else you wanna call? The, the Mayans, the Ica's, the Caribs, the... They did not know. The Tiino, they did not know nothing about Mary and Jesus. The Choctaw, the Chickasaw, the so-called Seminole, the, 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 um, the indigenous people of America did not know nothing about Jesus and Mary. Not until these Protestant and Catholic Christians came. In the name of their Jesus, murdering innocent people, claim to have the high side of holy supremacy today. Amnesia, you forgetting. You arguing me about Jesus, you got amnesia. Forget dry bones, man, you have totally forgotten. Listen, a criticism level by many Protestants at the cult of Mary. See now, the Protestants who took what they wanted from the Catholic Church, now they wanna argue about Mary, the worship of Mary, right? It says Catholics maintain that the veneration, hyperdulia accorded Mary, while higher than that accorded to any other creature is infinitely lower than the worship latria reserved for Jesus. Like, they're saying there is no one higher to worship besides Jesus, Mary's next. How do you separate what our Latin people, Latin brothers and sisters doing compared to what the Catholic brothers and sisters doing? I mean, the Protestant, how do you separate the two? You got, you got Hispanic people in your church, your Christian church, and they got rosaries and candles at home, going to a Protestant Christian church? They can't shake the worship of Mary. Mediatrix is a title given to Mary, mother of Jesus and Christianity. See, Catholicism is Christianity. It refers to the intercessory role of the Blessed Virgin Mary. Once she no longer a virgin, once she had a baby? Once she no longer a virgin, once she had a baby? I mean, a virgin is a young maid that has not had a baby. Once you have a baby, you're not a virgin no more. But she divinely a virgin. It says she as a mediator in the salvic redemption by her... So Mary's a mediator because of the redemption by her son, Jesus Christ, and that he bestows graces through her. A woman who is a mediator. Not only we worship Father, Son, and Holy Ghost, now, are we on the right slide, Al? Oh, I'm not on the right slide. He ain't changing if I ain't changing. Okay. So now, you getting graces through her son, Jesus. She's the mediator. That's why you see our Catholics, Mary, Mother, Father. You hear him saying that, right? Holy Mother Mary's, whatever, blah, 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 blah. But y'all already know that. This is just a recap. Isaiah chapter 44. Isaiah chapter 44, verse 8. Isaiah 44 and 8. Listen at this. Jesus, Mary, Trinity, all of that, sisters and brothers, is why you have amnesia. You are, have apostasy. You have denounced. You have forgotten. You no longer, you have disaffiliated yourself with the true covenant, with the true people, with the true mighty power. Look what Isaiah has to say. Isaiah 44 and 8. Fear ye not, neither be afraid. How are people following Jesus and still afraid? You know why? Because the people that gave you Jesus is the one killing everybody. Have not I told thee from that time, and have declared it, ye are even my witnesses? Is there a God beside me? Beside me? Yeah, there is no God. I know not any. I'm not speaking blasphemy. You speaking blasphemy. Telling me to worship Jesus, the Trinity, and what he's gonna do and has done, hadn't done, and his mother Mary. Billions of people are Catholic Protestant Christians. It's all the same thing, same worship. Roman Catholic Church created it. They had a whole bunch of councils. They proofread and made sure of the doctrine they wanted to give you. You want to argue to me about something you know not? I'm gonna keep telling you, I like that word, ad nauseam. You continuously have amnesia? I'm gonna continuously keep pouring out the information. Huh? Now, let's look at something. Let's look at another thing that people got amnesia about. Look at this right here. The language. Let's look at this Hebrew language. Because we get here in an Israelite community, right? Black Hebrew, like, everybody want to keep black, like, they know, they see your color. They gonna already associate you, put you under ADL and all that. They already associate you with the so-called radicals, right? Your brothers and sisters that Israel don't want no part of. Yeah. They grouping everybody together because it's about race. Right? We see here, we can't even be in the black Christian church and get along. Ain't nobody claiming TD Jakes today? I ain't gonna call my sister, she gonna give me no quote about TD Jakes' last sermon. Sarah Jakes, all of them, right? All the other black pastors in Dallas is like, oh, it's a vacuum. He fall, it's time for us to rise up. We gonna get all the endorsements, everybody gonna watch us, everybody gonna flood to our... It's just a money grab. They not teaching nothing different than him. They gonna teach the exact same doctrine as TD Jakes. It don't matter. Now, we getting the Hebrew Israelite community. Now, people separating themselves from One West or the Commandment Keepers, or Demona and those brew. Everybody is doing their own thing. So let's just get to the language, and I'm just laying some stuff out. Just another way we will never unify because everybody has amnesia and they only want to believe whatever their leaders say. Now, let's look at this. The Hebrew, Hebrew, listen, is a Northwest Semitic language. Everybody cool with that? Within the Afro-Asianic language family. Wait a second. People in Israel today, they don't claim Africa. They say Middle East. But it's Africa. Now, watch this part. This is where the Christians is already done watching. Now, here go where the brews stop watching, because they not understanding what happened with Abraham then when they came. Hebrew, a regional dialect of the Canaanite language. Hebrew is a dialect of the Canaanite language. Like my Aunt Maka all said, this come from Encyclopedia Britannica. They know. It's a dialect. Why? Because when Abraham then came from the Ur Chaldees, they were already speaking a similar language. It's the same region. So how do you, how do you think Abraham and Melchizedek could communicate? Why would Abraham give offers to Melchizedek, the king priest of Salem, and they couldn't even speak the same language? Y'all gotta figure out the connection. It was natively spoken by the Israelites and remained in regular use as a first language until 200 CE, 200 AD. 200 years after the death of Jesus, and as the liturgical language of Judaism and the Samaritans, right? So most Israelites coming to the Hebrew understanding of who they are, right? And then, they're like, well, what language we supposed to speak? We supposed to go back and find our native roots, right? So you immediately start looking for Hebrew, and you run into what they teaching, what the Europeans is teaching over in Israel, right? So you start to see all the vowel points in a Meseritic text. I can tell you, Israelites, that there is no vowels, but you still talking to me in vowels. So I can't communicate in something you don't understand, right? So you say shalom, and I'm telling you, there's no o's. Shalom, shalom, right? We already seen that Melchizedek was the king of shalom. So shalom means peace. So then, when you look at shalom, it's like, wait a minute. Even we said the other day, did we add another vowel in there? Is there a wa? Because when you looked up Salem, there was no wa. So we been saying shalom as a greeting, but peace is shalom, right? So we know that the Israelis or the Jewish people today, they use all these vowel points, and they use all the extra vowels. They use all the extra vowels and they use the vowel points, right? So then, when you come in and whatever class, whatever church or class or camp you go with, they're gonna have to dictate to you what language, right? So you gonna be saying Yahweh? Or you gonna be saying Yahweh? Or you gonna be saying Yahoh, right? They still giving you other words with a whole bunch of vowels. So then, now that they do that, now they gotta create a whole new lexicon, a whole new version to teach this language. You got Israel, you got Yasharala, and then you got Yisrael. They putting y's, you got a y and an i. So you got a yod, and then you got an i after that, right? It's like, what's the point of having a y and an i? Right? You say ah, ahi. Now, they adding the i at the end of brother. Like, who's dictating this language? And why would you speak a word that has more vowels even than what the Israelis have? Or the Azkhanazis have? Like, why would you even put more vowels in than the vowel point? But that's what's coming from the teachers, right? It's just confusion just to keep us at odds. This is my point. Look, the history of the Hebrew language can be defined into four major periods. They already know the Hebrew language has changed from the biblical Hebrew, and that's from until the third century, right? The third century BCE, the language of most of the Hebrew Bible. So majority of the Bible has a biblical Hebrew, right? Then, we have the Mishnah Hebrew. Keyword Mishnah. Hey, who language you think that is? Huh? Who speaks that? Who uses the Mishnah? So we already know the Mishnah Hebrew ain't the biblical Hebrew. Then, they say the medieval Hebrew. Uh-oh, now, we up close to, up close to us, right? Now, we in the sixth to 13th century AD. Okay, now, we got the medieval Hebrew and then the modern Hebrew. See, most brews go to this modern Hebrew, but we finna go in detail in this medieval and modern. Watch this. Let's go to the next slide. One second. All right. During the early Mishnaic period, listen, some of the guttural consonants of biblical Hebrew were combined or confused with one another. So they're telling you the Mishnaic and the biblical Hebrew aren't the same. Look at this. The Mishnaic Hebrew also borrowed a number of what? They didn't put it, but it's vowels from the Greek, the Latin, Romans, and Persian words. The language has changed, not for the better. He who rules is trying to make a language that they understand, right? Now, look at this medieval. medieval Hebrew from about the sixth century to the 13th century. Now, this is well after the fall of Jerusalem. We're well after the Arabs have conquered Jerusalem and ran that whole area all the way up to Spain. Look at this. Through the 13th century, when many words were borrowed. Now, we borrowing words. We didn't just take vowels. Now, Greek, Spanish, Arabic, and other languages have now been added to the medieval Hebrew, and then, now, the modern Hebrew is what's being spoken today in Israel. It's not the original. Now, listen. You live in Texas, they speak one way. You go down to New Orleans, they speak with a little singing. Yeah, baby, yeah, we gonna get some gumbo, some jambalaya. You know what I'm saying? Like, you gotta really listen to them talking fast, right? Or you go to Jamaica, and you gotta really listen. You go to St. Louis, there's a whole different dialect of the same English. You understand what I'm saying? Everywhere you go throughout the world, you got different dialects. Hey, same thing with Hebrew. Now, not only has Hebrew changed, now, today, look at all these dialects. Modern, Azkhanazi, Sephardi Hebrew, Mizrahi Hebrew, Yemenite Hebrew, Tiberian. Ain't no Israelite, Tiberia? That sound cold. Medieval Hebrew, Mishnaic, biblical Hebrew. Y'all see what I'm saying? Now, we get into America, and you let some Negroes get a hold to it. Now, we got the Lashawan Kardashian. Now, the Negro Israelite, he say, forget all of that. We gonna go to the Lashawan, which we have proven there is no vowels, right? It's a simpler language, right? But now, we have the Lashawan Kardashian, which all these people, they all reject the Lashawan Kardashian. All of them. All their dialects and everything they speaking overseas, they reject the Lashawan Kardashian. So, Mr. and Mrs. Hebrew, what dialect and what language are you speaking? And can you even talk to someone at GOCC? Or IUIC? Or Israel Agath? Or One Body? Or Children of the Light? Or Birth of a Nation? Can anybody speak Hebrew to anyone other than these people? What you wearing, bro? What symbols you got on you? You got the same, you got the same symbol? Look at the symbology. Somebody created this Hebrew, right? And then, they started putting Jewish symbols on it. Symbol of the Rothschild family. You started using things that's associated with things that you know not. Trying to make it more Hebrew. Look at this. Lashawan Kardashian, pronunciation, pronunciation. So Lashawan Kardashian, pronunciation of the Hebrew phrase, lashon kadesh, meaning holy tongue or holy language. That's the definition. But majority of Israelites, are they speaking Lashawan Kardashian? Are they speaking? Here's Lashawan Kardashian. Here go, most of the Hebrew dialects, you say, they'll say shalom. Lashawan Kardashian is gonna say shalom. You put the extra vowels back in, Lash, shalom, right? But we shouldn't be even doing Matrice Lektikana's or Meseritic texts, Meseritic vowel pointing, or Matrice Lektikana's, right? So, okay, you call it Lashawan Kardashian, right? Without the vowels. But we can't even communicate to each other in none of the dialects. So now, not only are people confused on Jesus, Yeshua, Yahweh Shai, Yahia Shai. Now, because of the language, everybody is saying something different. Yahua, Yahwa, Yahoh. Go to Nehemiah chapter 13. This is same problem our forefathers had before. Same problem we having today. We gotta remember the days of old. Think about this, sisters and brothers. Why have all the Hebrew Israelite congregations since the 60s? Why has none of them come together to solidify what language should be spoken? Well, we already know that there are Negro Americans or our brothers and sisters that follow Judaism. They want the approval of the Beth Dem. So they're gonna be speaking and following and doing whatever they do under Judaism. So anyone that breaks away from that Judaism is gonna take a little bit of it to fortify and solidify themselves in their language and their rituals, right? And then, the further you get away from that, you're gonna get what? Lashawan Kardashian. You're gonna get people trying to come together in coalition, right? So you're gonna accept the Christian form of Judaism, or you're gonna be on the outside, right? Trying to find the truth. But look, this happened before. Now, look at this in captivity. But look, this happened before. Now look at this in captivity. Nehemiah, chapter thirteen. So they're trying to, Nehemiah and Ezra are trying to get the Levitical priesthood back together. Check this out. Nehemiah, chapter thirteen, verse twenty-three. Watch this. "In those days also saw I Jews that had married wives of Ashdod, Ammon, and Moab." Now think about this. We got our people now saying we can marry anybody we want. Love is love. Oh, sorry about that. Thank you. So we got our people saying they can marry and love who they want. So what happens if we marry a Jewish woman? Or a European, or an Asian? You don't think that's gonna have some kind of effect on our children? Course it is. The children of Israel, the twelve tribes are not supposed to marry outside the twelve tribes. That's just what the books say. So when you read through Nehemiah, you're gonna see that, right? But besides marrying the other people, let's see what he say. "In those days also I saw Jews that had married the wives of Canaanites." So Ashdod, Ammon, and Moab, these are Canaanite nations. "And their children spake half in the speech of Ashdod and not, and could not speak in the Jews' language, but according to the language of each." Listen. So we went from the biblical Hebrew, so when did we stop speaking the original Hebrew, which is a dialect of the Canaanites? Which Abraham them would have solidified after they came over into, from the Urachaldees. When did we stop speaking that? When we went into the mass captivity. That's how you go. And so what, what language did they start speaking afterwards? A Mishnaic. Why? Why? Because they started adding in the vowels and consonants from the land of their captors. Is that not what's going on now? If we gonna be Jewish, just be Jewish and do what it takes to be Jewish through the Beth Dem. It exists. The rabbis from Jerusalem over there, the Europeans, they've already sanctioned some brothers over here. They could take you through the rituals over here to be Jewish in America. But if we say they aren't and we are, right? Then how are we gonna believe that they gave us the truth, just like the Christians? They gave us Jesus and half the world believed that? Or a third of the world, or two thirds of the world believe in some form of Christianity? Everybody else is, is some derivative of Christianity. Through some Abrahamic faith on down, right? Now let's look at the next topic. So the language ain't the language. We could just stop fighting about the language. Understand what the words mean and do our best and stop arguing and dividing ourselves about the language. We already divided enough under false religions. Now we divided under language. And so let's look at the canonization of this Bible. Let's look at the canonization of this Bible. Canonical means conforming to a general rule or acceptable procedure connected with or allowed by the laws of the Christian church. And thirdly, of or related to the books that are considered to be part of the religion's official texts. Who do you believe established what it means to be canonical? You mean the same Catholic Church that gave us Mary? The same Catholic Church, Church that gave us Jesus? The same Catholic Church that gave us Sunday worship? Easter, Christmas. We believe in them people? And they in cahoots with the rabbis in Jerusalem, cuz they ain't have no clue, cuz they ain't the people. We gonna believe them? That's amnesia. Not knowing history, and even when you have history, you continue to stay asleep. That's my point. Why divide ourselves over things that our leaders won't even get together to try to bring a conclusion and vote in majority and say, this is what we're gonna do? Why have leaders that won't sit down at tables to solidify a community? What's the point of calling you something when your leader and the other people that represent you to the world don't agree and get along? It makes no sense. Our people was not at the table to, 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 to conform what was acceptable. We didn't have nothing to do with the laws of the Christian church and the establishment of the Christian church. That ain't what the Israelite people was involved in. We, look, what, what's official? We wasn't at the table determining what was official. Let's keep going. Now look at this. Who said? Who said them five books of Moses and them thirty-four other books, that was the Old Testament? Who said that? The Catholic Church. Who told us that the New Testament was even holy and worthy to even be canonical? It wasn't written by none of the prophets and nobody historically of the foundation of the children of Israel. So now, why do we even hold these twenty-seven books? And why do we read them anyway? There's some good stuff in it, but no one at the time of Christ was even reading them. Listen to what I'm saying. This is amnesia. If you wanna hold to Jesus, he didn't read none of these twenty-seven books. Peter, Paul, and the elders of the church, none of them read these twenty-seven books. They weren't necessary. They weren't even in existence. They didn't even exist. You don't want, you so blinded and so dumbed down, you don't even wanna know who wrote these books. And then when somebody says you who, told you who wrote these books, you are so stuck on having salvation and having the promises to, that Israel was granted by the Creator, you want it so bad, you don't even want to believe in common sense. The whole book, it's only for who it's for. It ain't nothing none of us can do about it. All the nations of the world believe something. We ain't had nothing to do with the canonicalization of this Bible. Who gave them the right and who said that they were the authority? Look at this. The Apocrypha. Uh, eh, these Christian brews, we, eh, you can't read that Apocrypha. Have you ever read it? Do you even know who wrote it? Should we or should we not even be reading it? We still exploring it, right? But look at this. The Apocrypha is found in the Vulgate. We gonna get to the Vulgate later. The Vulgate is the English ver- the English version of Apocrypha, uh, presents fifteen separate books. All books of the Apocrypha were translated from Latin. Listen to me. Latin into Greek. So that mean the Apocrypha, it wasn't even written in Greek first? If it was written in Latin, that means Romans wrote it. Except the books of Syrac or Ecclesiasticus has a Hebrew origin. Okay. No New Testament authors quoted the Apocrypha books. Why not? They tell you Matthew, Mark, and Lu- Luke, but, and John wrote the Gospels. Paul wrote the Epistles. Uh, 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 John on the Alapatmos wrote Revelations, but, and none of them quoted the Apocrypha. Why not? Just think about it. All right. So the Zondavon Pictorial Bible Dictionary, the Church Fathers, listen, you gotta look these people up. Melito, Oregon, Athanasius, Jerome, etc., did not regard the Apocrypha as canonical, although they permitted their use for edification. Let me ask you, they're the church fathers of who? Like my boy DJ CC. Who? Who? Who are they the fathers of? What church? This ain't the Christian church? I mean, I'm sorry, it's slacky. It is the Christian church. This ain't the Israelites. This, eh, they not the forefathers. They not Abraham Isaac, Yehovah. You know, they not Eber, they not Noah, they not none of them. They don't even fi- they don't even keep the Shabbat. They don't keep the feast day. This is Christian dogma. This is Roman Catholic Church dogma. The children of Israel, the diaspora, why we listening to them? Who said the Christian church superseded the church of the Most High? When we know better, why do we still listen? This is why. Look, look what they did. So they canonized the Bible. Now watch this. Uh, for the sake of time, for the sake of time, we not gonna read all these slides. Who's that? One second. Uh. So Council of Jemania in ninety AD, listen, twenty years after the fall of Jerusalem, the Council of Jemania was unimportant. Why? In determining the Jewish canon. Now the Jewish is trying to have a canon? The Jewish have a canon? I don't think so, right? "They did not gather to determine the canon of the Old Testament, but rather limited their discussion to the books of Ecclesiastes and Song of Solomon." What a waste of time. But they're trying to say that the Old Testament was already canonized. So did the Catholic Church canonize it? Or was, uh, Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, Joshua, was that already like that? No. Come on now. Come on, that. They didn't discuss the canonization of it because they were just Holy Scrolls. And I'm pretty sure it was more of them. All right, so let me keep reading. "The Roman Catholics and Orthodox leaders misrepresented history when they make claims that the canon of the Old Testament was not fixed until the Council of Jemania in ninety AD. They desperately do not want to be bound to following the Bible. Roman Catholics and Orthodox leaders feel that rewriting history to suggest the canon of the Jews was not fixed until after the Jewish system was abolished in seventy AD is an absurd, is as absurd as it is wishful thinking." Think about it. Only after God destroys the Jewish religion do the Jews get a fixed canon? Okay, there was clearly a fixed canon long before Jesus was born and when Jesus was tempted by the Bible there, uh, three times. He did not reply, uh, human, man-made church tradition says, saying rather all three times Jesus replied, it is written. Okay. The Greeks made it say that. Everything about Jesus was a story made up. Of course, it did not exist. The Holy Scriptures existed. The canonization of it, us, our whole understanding of canonization was given up to us by who? The Catholic Church. We don't know how the scrolls was written. We don't even know if we have all the chapters. We don't even know if we have all the authors. We only know what they gave us. And guess what? They expect us to trust them. They expect us to trust anything they have to say. But we know also that, um, that the Flavians took the Holy Scrolls, locked them away, and burned up all the copies besides their copies. Look. "The earliest attempt to canonize a, a list of specific Christian writings," listen. "The earliest attempt to canonize Christian writings," listen, we gotta understand, the New Testament is Christian. They saying the Israelites already had their scrolls. Even when we read the prophets, they were writing, they were scribing, right? Now we talking about this New Testament Greco-Roman teaching about Jesus. "The earliest attempts to canonize a list of s- s- specific Christian writings was made by a notorious heretic." Listen, you remember Marcion? Marcion of Sinop? He formed his own canon. Listen, a man. They don't wanna give him credit, but he's the first one to take the Flavians writings or the, uh, man, what was their last name? Uh, the Piso's writings and canonize them, right? So Marcion of Sinop formed his own canon in one forty CE. It included ten letters of Paul and a heavily modified Gospel of Luke. That's it. Your first New Testament canonization was Paul's writings and Luke. Marcion made this early canon based on, listen, his belief that the God of Jesus and the God of the Hebrews were two different people, or two different gods. So what did we read earlier in Isaiah? "There is no other God beside me." No, not any. So the New Testament and Christianity is formulating these canons on the basis that the God of the Hebrews and the God of Jesus, and Jesus as God, are two different gods. "He therefore abandoned the Hebrew Bible." This is the first canonization, abandoning the whole Hebrew Bible entirely. Seeing Jesus God as superior, this eventually led to the excommunication, right? Now listen, it led to his excommunication, but you still got Paul's writings, and you still got Luke's writings. Marcion. Now look at this. In thirty-nine, in thirty-three ninety-seven AD, at the Council of Carthage, I'm just gonna read the highlighted. "They convened in three ninety-seven," this is after the Council of Nicaea, right? But the Council of Nicaea, they only met for, to talk about the divinity of, of Jesus. But the Council of Carthage, three ninety-seven AD, "The foremost result of this convention was a list of the biblical canon or the accepted books of the Bible." Listen, Marcion was when? One forty AD. After Constantine, three ninety-seven AD, they recon- who? The Christian church reconvened another council. "The Council of Carthage was to determine the accepted books of this New Testament." "The Council of Carthage listed the twenty-seven books of the New Testament as well as the thirty-nine books of the Old Testament, but it also included several books not part of the typical canon, such as Maccabees and Ezres." Wait a second. So we, we can't even talk to a Christian about who wrote these New Testament books, right? But when we look at how the New Testament was canonized, who chose the books? The Catholic Church. Look. Now, we're moving twelve hundred years in the future at the Council of Trent. "The Roman Catholic Church received as canonical all books except First and Second Ezres and the Prayer of Manasseh." So they already, slacking. So they already had a, approved Maccabees and they had Ezres at first, right? At the Council of Carthage, but by the time we get to Trent, now they want to exclude Ezres and the Prayer of Manasseh. So that would tell you there are more Apocrypha books that they do not want us to know about and they do not want us to read. They're just picking and choosing, right? Let's continue. So Council of Trent in fifteen forty-six, they, uh, then taking up the text and the use, uh, of the sacred books, they declared that the Vulgate, you remember we read the Vulgate earlier? The Vulgate to be the authentic text for sermons, uh, disputations, although this did not exclude textual amendations. Wait a minute, so the Catholic Church is proving what books and what doctrine to teach? Wait a minute, so the Catholic Church is proving what books and what doctrine to teach? And they're the ones that said the Vulgate was the authentic text to use. So what's the Vulgate? Let's look at the next slide. You remember those, uh, Fathers of the Church we named? Look at this. Jerome. Jerome started, uh, by revising the Gospels using the Greek manuscripts available. What Greek manuscripts? The Vulgate. This he did because of the vast differences he found in the various Latin texts that were available. Ain't nobody talking about Hebrew nothing. About the same time, he started revising the Old Testament. Jerome. Also, uh, wait, he started revising the Old Testament by using the Septuagint. A Greek version of the Old Testament. Come on now. Jerome also translated the Old Testament into Latin. Wait a minute. So once he revised it, then he translated it into Latin by using the Hebrew text. A task he did without, uh, ecclesiastical sanction. So he did it without having approval. The present Vulgate contains elements which belong to every period of its development. Oh my goodness. Now who is this? Who is this Jerome, this father of the Christian church? Check this out, y'all. Jerome was born in thirteen seventy-nine and he died in fourteen sixteen. He was a Czech. Where is Czech? The Czech Republic. Czech is the what? He was a chief follower. So he was, hold on, he was a scholastic philosopher, a theologian, a reformer and a professor. Seems like a reformer is a rewriter. Jerome was one of the chief followers of John House and was burned for heresy at the Council of Constance. He is often called Hieronymus, the Latin form of his first name. So let's look at and see who, so he wrote, he rewrote this Vulgate, right? He rewrote the Old Testament, changed this, did a little remix. So y'all watch out trying to quote the Vulgate. So this John House, it says he was born in thirteen sixty-nine, he died in fourteen fifteen. So he died a year before Jerome. It says he was a Czech theologian, a Roman Catholic priest, philosopher, master dean and rector of the Charles University of Prague. He's a church reformer in spirit of Housenism, Husetism. A key predecessor of the Protestantism and a seminal figure in the Bohemian Reformation. Bohemian Grove, Bohemian Reformation. So the Latin Vulgate. Let's look at this Latin Vulgate. What is the Latin Vulgate? Latin Vulgate is unrevised old Latin text of the Book of Wisdom. Ecclesiasticus, First and Second Maccabees and Baruch. The Book of Wisdom. Number two, an old Latin form of the Salter, which Jerome corrected from the Septuagint. Latin Vulgate, Jerome's free translation of the Books of Job and Judith. Jerome's translation from the Hebrew Old Testament, including the Salter. And old Latin revision of the Gospels from Greek manuscripts. An old Latin New Testament revised. Stay away from the Latin Vulgate. Look at this, the Council of Rome. Moving on, the Council of Rome canonized the Christian Bible in three eighty-two A.D. with the degree of, of the Council of Rome on the canon of scripture. The canon included seventy-three books. The Bible, Biblical Canon was reaffirmed by the Regional Councils of Hippo in three ninety-two, Carthage in three ninety-seven and Florence in fourteen forty-two. In fifteen forty-six, the Council of Trent definite, definitively defined the canon. Y'all seen how many times the canon been changed? Yes. Now, now look, now then we get to the Author of Revelation. Let's go to Revelation twenty-two. So after all this remixing and revising, just like the language, right? We get to Revelation twenty-two. This is stuff that got us with amnesia. This is, this is why people and our people just go to sleep and settle on the simplest thing. Revelation's twenty-two and eighteen. For I testify, who's the I? I testify unto every man that heareth the words of the prophecy of this book. Is he talking about the whole Bible or is he just talking about Revelation? He just talking about Revelation. If any man shall add unto these things, God shall add unto him the plagues that are written in this book. And if any man shall take away from the words of the book of this prophecy, God shall take away his part out of the Book of Life and out of the Holy City and from the things which are written in this book. It had people not wanna read Revelation, scared to, to even try to interpret it cuz the Author of Revelation says so, but you gotta look at who's touching the book. Who wrote that? Who wrote that in there and why did they write that in there? Let's look at something else that got our people just at odds with each other. Supersessionism. Replacement theology. Here's what you need to know, Mr. and Mrs. Christian or Mr. and Mrs. Hebrew that holds on to Christian teachings. Replacement theology is even used in your camp and your congregation. You using Yahweh, Shai, Yeshua and any teaching from the New Testament, you have replaced L. You have replaced the children of Israel and you have replaced their covenant. Just be Christian already. Look, replacement theology or supersessionism essentially teaches that the church has replaced Israel in God's plan. Who were writing the New Testament? Who were confirming the canon? Who's approving languages? It's a new church, right? It's, it's, it's a new priesthood, right? It's, it's new rabbis, it's, it's, it's new Catholic priests and pope. Like these are the people that's trying to dictate who we are and what we believe. They've replaced L, they've replaced his people, they've replaced the church, they've replaced the doctrine, they've replaced the holy days, feast days, et cetera, et cetera, ad nauseam, right? Adherence of replacement theology, listen. This is how you know that you're not following the voice of the Most High. Adherence of replacement theology believe that the Jews are, are no longer God's chosen people. So anytime you hear somebody say that it's no longer just for Israel, it's for the whole world, it's replacement theology. So you can't go into New Testament at all because it all teaches replacement theology. The whole New Testament is replacement theology. And L does not have specific future plans for the nation of Israel. That's not true. The whole gospel, I mean, the whole New Testament teaches the redemption of Israel. So when you hear somebody say, uh, salvation is for everyone, uh, everyone could be Abraham's seed, we all grafted in, uh, Jesus died for everyone, that's all replacement theology teaching. For the, for most of Christian history, supersessionism has been the mainstream interpretation of the New Testament of all three major historical traditions within Christianity. So the Orthodox, the people out of Turkey, Constantinople, the Roman Catholics out of the Vatican and the Protestants out of Europe, they all preach replacement theology. So there's no, not one Christian church here in the black communities that does not preach replacement theology. You stuck in amnesia, you trying to believe something that don't exist, believing anything else, trying to argue with an apologist about a Christian teaching is pointless. Now let's look at the scriptures that are the basis. We're gonna look at one scripture, Hebrews chapter eight. This is their foundation. They don't even read all of Hebrews eight. They just go to Hebrews eight thirteen. Listen, the Europeans just make up their own doctrine. They know people don't read. Especially the Negro. Hebrews eight and thirteen, it says, in that he saith, a new covenant. He hath made the first old, now that which decayeth and waxeth old is ready to vanish away. But you know what the Christians don't do? You know what you replacement theologists don't do? You don't go up to verse six and read down to verse thirteen. The new covenant is not for the whole world and we are not in it now. It's not for the whole world and there's, there are stipulations to being in a new covenant. We're not in it now, right? So that's how you know you got amnesia, if you're talking about the new covenant, salvation now, I don't have to answer for my sins now. You're under replacement theology. You got a whole new gospel teaching. Hey, slavery. Nobody wants to talk about slavery, but, but who sanctioned slavery? Hey, let's start here. Papal bull. Papal bull is a type of public decree, letters, patents and charter issued by a pope. Of the what church? What church? What church is establishing papal bulls? The Catholic Church. The same people that changed Sunday, no. The same people that, uh, uh, took the laws away to stop you from worshiping L, uh, took his people away. Listen, now, once they destroyed the people and put them in to sleep, now they started writing these holy papal orders. It is named after the leading seal Bula that was traditionally appended to the end in order to authenticate it, right? So when they put that Bula on it, it was law, right? These holy Roman leaders who said they are the vicars of Christ. Here's the main culprits. This is how if you, if you did come on a slave ship or if you were colonizing the land where your people are from, the Catholic Church was behind it. And they, in fourteen fifty-two, established the Dumdiverces. Who did it? Pope Nicholas the Fifth. Look it up. Fourteen fifty-five, Pope Nicholas the Fifth, the Romanus Pontifex. Listen, Roman Pontiff. And then in, uh, May fourteen ninety-three, Pope Alexander the Sixth, he said, the intra Cetera. I'm not gonna go into all three of them, but here's the conclusion of the matter. These three edicts served as the foundation and justification for the doctrine of discovery and set in place a catastrophic chain of events for indigenous people. You and me. Indigenous. Melanated, indigenous. All in the name of the empire expansion and religious rituals. Jesus, the cross, Christianity, doctrine of discovery, manifest destiny. Jesus gave the power to kill you, to take your culture, your language, your God, your land, everything and subject you by divine order. And now you worshiping this Jesus and these people in Jesus' name have subjugated you to the lower race, call you a minority, and now you wanna argue for Jesus. Now you are an apologist for Jesus. I don't have nothing to do, a Spanish, a European can argue all they want about Jesus. It makes sense. He looked like them, they conquered the world. It makes sense. But for you indigenous melanated person around the world to be arguing the case for the Dumdiverces, the Romanus Pontifex and the intra Cetera, which the Spanish, uh, the Italians, the French, the English, Portuguese, went all over the world killing, murdering. Makes no sense to me. Wake up out of your amnesia, please. Please. Thirteen oh two, Pope Boniface the Eighth wrote a papal order called Unum Sanctum. Pope is heir to Peter. Peter in the New Testament is supposed to be an Israelite from Galilee. The Romans from Rome, Spain, Greece, wherever they're from, they now pass a papal order which says all popes are divine heirs of Peter. Not only did they create Jesus, made Mary divine, now they made the Pope, the rulers of the Vatican, they are now heirs of Peter, vicars of Christ. Meaning everyone under their rule is subject to the Roman Pontiff. King priests of everywhere that they conquer, right? So let's move on. So this is how it's happened across the world to you, Mr. African, my Indian brothers, Asia and what they're trying to do all over the world in Americas. The vicars of Christ have solidified papal orders and solidified doctrine of discovery and manifest destiny. Still to this day, they are using the same thing, right? It says they are the earthly representatives of Christ. How in the world are we representing Jesus when the Pope say they are the earthly representatives? They made themselves heirs of Peter. On this rock I build my church, they built a whole Christian church, made themselves ruler over everyone that doesn't bow to the cross. The Bishop of Rome. Come on, people. Come on, people. Wake up from your amnesia. Come out of the coma, please. Doctrine of Discovery. Doctrine of Discovery established a religious, listen. This is how they came and conquered, uh, Puerto Rico and Haiti and the Caribs and South America, Mexico, North America, uh, Alaska, Africa, Australia, the, the, the islands of the Pacific. The doctrine of discovery establishes a religious, political and legal justification for colonization and seizure of land not inhabited by a Christian. It gives them the religious go-ahead to kill and take from everyone. The doctrine of discovery provided a framework for Christian explorers in the name of their sovereign. Who's the sovereign ruler of a Christian? The Pope. Cuz the Pope replaced Jesus. So if he's the replacement of Jesus and he's a sovereign, then man, you are worshiping the man. You're a Christian, you are worshiping the Pope. The Pope replaced Jesus. And if they can replace Jesus, Jesus was never God. Jesus never existed. He's just a story. So they could go all over the world and take from everyone, even those that feed them, teach them how to grow crops, to how to live, teach them from stop eating themselves, to take baths, the ones that brought them into higher civilization, they killed them. They took the gold, they destroyed the Incans, the Mayans, India. They tried to get in Ethiopia, couldn't, but the Arabs did, right? And then they conquered every other island mass in which they could, right? Look, doctrine of discovery, indigenous peoples, because they were non-Christian. Listen, when they found us, we were non-Christians. We didn't know about Jesus, Mary, Peter, the Pope, none of it. The Romans consider you not human. So you think cuz you, uh, convert to their religion, they think you're human? Have they treated you like human? You're still not human. It don't matter how many churches we put in our community, they still will come and take it and gentrify it. And therefore the land was empty. So they considered all the hundreds of million people that was in North, South, Central America, they considered America empty because they were not human. They were not Christian. This is what Jesus is about. Or Terra Nulius. When Christopher Columbus arrived in fourteen ninety-two, it is estimated that Americas were, uh, actually occupied with over a hundred million indigenous people. Okay, we gotta see what Terra Nulius is. What is Terra Nulius? Terra Nulius, look at this map. I'm gonna leave that map up, but Terra Nulius. Yeah, Terra Nulius means territory without a master. Christianity is about giving indigenous people a master. You think they came in and conquered Jerusalem and then not try to leave them with a master? If they went around the world saying it was empty because they didn't follow Jesus, we need to bring them a master through the doctrine of discovery? You think they didn't do it in Jerusalem or anywhere else that they conquered? Let's go to Zechariah chapter eleven, verse five. Zechariah chapter eleven, verse five. Oh man, we at the end too. Come on, let's move. Zechariah chapter eleven, verse five. Zechariah chapter eleven, verse five. I'm gonna read it from ten minutes, we trying to beat the time, huh? Zechariah eleven and five, whose possessors slay them through the doctrine of discovery, papal bulls and Terra Nulius, and hold themselves not guilty. And they that sell them say, blessed be the, blessed be L, for I am rich. They said, blessed be the Lord of the Israelites, blessed be the Lord of them Hebrews. For I am rich now because I took everything from them. And their own shepherds pity them not. Our own people gave us up to the Spanish, to the French, to the English, to the Portuguese, to the Dutch. Our own people told others where we were. Don't kill us, we'll help you kill their mothers. Is that not still what's happening today? It's still what's happening today, sisters and brothers. We have amnesia and because we have amnesia, we are falling into apostasy. We're falling into disaffiliation with the Most High. Let's go to Hosea four and six. Hosea four and six. They got us worshiping a, a false God and his mama. They got us worshiping the Pope, man on earth. They got us speaking all these different languages and then they got us un-unified by the denominations, right? And we just keep on acting like we don't know. We, we ain't fight for nothing because we don't want to know the same thing together. Hosea four and six, my people are destroyed for lack of knowledge. Because thou hast rejected knowledge, I will also reject thee that thou shall not be, shall be no priest to me, seeing thou hast forgotten the law of L. I will also forget thy children. We the children. We walking around the earth like he has forgotten us. He has not forgotten us. We have amnesia. We don't know L exists. We don't hear his voice. We're under the curse because we don't want to remember. Even when somebody is screaming it from the mountaintop, we still reject him and his word. Therefore, many of the curses have already happened to us. And they're gonna keep happening to us because when the enemy reads it, they like, yeah. Let us come up off of their ignorance, their calamity, their apostasy. So here's amnesia, right? Amnesia is a general term that describes memory loss. The loss can be temporary or permanent. Whoa, but amnesia usually refers to the temporary variety. So why do we not come up out of our amnesia? Why are we acting like it's permanent with this idolatry? With these graven and molten images everywhere, chasing after filthy lucre and money, right? But when you get sick and you on your deathbed, money and riches don't seem that important, do they? Most people with amnesia have problems with short-term memory so they cannot retain new information. That's you. You don't want to retain nothing new because our colonizers have done a great job giving you their story. Recent memories are most likely to be lost, like this lesson. It's quick to be lost, like our series of lessons covering this same topic. It's short-term memory, you can't remember that you heard it before. More remote or deeply ingrained memories may be spared. Next definition, we're at the end. Chronic amnesia, also known as long-term amnesia, that's what we got, we chronic, is a type of amnesia that develops slowly over time. It's characterized by an uh anterograde, anterograde amnesia, which means the person cannot learn anything new. And retrograde amnesia, which means the person forgets events from their past. In conclusion, sisters and brothers, we not only have forgotten L and his plan for us, but we have also forgotten the affliction, theft, destruction, and pain the enemy has done to us by the hand of the Romans. And everyone that has followed the plan of the Romans. You could call it Babylon, I'd rather use Romans. Because we were able to get back in our land and come back after the Babylonians, but we have not yet come out from the hole of the Romans here still in the diaspora, especially in the Americas. Sisters and brothers, that's the lesson I have for you today. I pray you are edified, Israel's continuous amnesia. I pray that we wake up and make it temporal and not permanent. I hope we come up out of the slavery and the, the programming of Christianity given to us by the enemy and that you are able to come back and worship L in spirit and truth and hear his voice. So with that, let's stand and let's close out. I'll close out with Psalms chapter one fifty. This is just a recap. If you knew it, standing on it. If you already knew it, all praise to the Most High. And if it's new, study, meditate, pray that you are able to retain the information. And with that, please re- repeat after me. Hala L. Hala L Elion in his sanctuary. Praise him in the firmament of his power. Praise L for his mighty acts. Praise L according to his excellent greatness. Praise L with the sound of the trumpet. Praise L with the psaltry and harp. Praise L with the timorlin dance. Praise L with the string instruments and organs. Praise L upon the loud symbols. Praise L upon the high-sounding symbols. Let everything that hath breath. Praise L. Praise L Elion. Hala L. Hala L Elion. Hala L Shaddai. Hala L. Hala L Elion. Hala L Shaddai. Most High, Almighty L, we thank you for the Shabbat. May you be blessed till we see each other again. This is the fifteenth day of the month of L's calendar. We are approaching the uh Pentecost and the feast of weeks. So I pray that everyone is continuing to get ready for that feast day. And if he says the same, we'll see you again on the next Shabbat. Stay prayed up. Let's pray for one another. And remember this, if you're going through a trial and a tribulation, it's only to prove you worthy for what is to come. Don't look at the trial and the tribulation. Focus on where you are trying to go. If you pray for the Most High, your proving could be to see if you're worthy of that which you ask for. Khan, until we see each other again, shalom.